I'm going to call the organizational meeting of April 17th, 2018 to order. I, Steve Wilkie, the city manager, will preside over the meeting until such time as the council, Alexis Council President. We can rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Quest, can you take the roll call?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
And Mr. Fields previously informed staff that he be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Council rules use Robert's Rules of Order for nominations. I will take nominations for council president from the floor and will continue to take nominations until such times as nominations are closed. At this point, the council can vote by roll call for a candidate and the candidate with the lowest total will be eliminated and this will continue until one candidate has the The council could choose to vote by ballot until one candidate received the majority of the council vote. Does the council have a preference?
Voices.
And just take nominations from the floor? Okay, so we'll go that route. The term, if the nomination is selected and the nominations are closed with only one candidate, the motion should be used to close the nominations and elect a council member as council president. The nominations do not require a second, but a second would be in order for closing the nominations. The terms of said elections will be for one year and we have, I'll handle the council president, then the new council president will handle the vice president. I now open the floor for the nominations of council president.
I'd like to nominate Diane Fritsch.
Diane Fritsch has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
I move we close nominations and vote for council president.
There's been a motion to nominate Diane Fritsch and close the nominations and make a motion to elect Diane. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You ready? Your roll call?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
I move.
Yep, you get the move. Then you run the next election. And then Mike, or someone gets to know. Somebody.
Oh, cold. Do I do now? Or do you? Okay. All right, moving on to item four, election of council vice president. Is there a nomination for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Mike Foster.
We have a nomination for Mike Foster.
I move we close nominations and vote for council vice president.
Okay, we need a second for that.
I'll second it.
Okay. And roll call.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Foster. Come on down. And Doug, you, you guys, you want to stay there?
No.
Okay, we'll just yell to Doug during. All right, well, welcome back and you did good last year, we'll do good this year. It's going to be short beating. I'm going to do it. Yeah, I think so. That's, take your time. Okay. Moving on to item number five, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of March 29th, 2018 and April 3rd, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seeing no corrections, let's take the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Hold on a second here.
Okay, did you have?
No, I'm sorry, we got something. I'm on the wrong page here.
You want to just do it off this for a while?
No, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one here.
Mm-hmm, that's okay.
Okay, no, it was me. I was on the wrong page, sorry.
That's okay, that's what happens when we move you around the table.
I must have bumped it.
Motion passed four zero.
Did you vote? Oh, you did, okay, I missed the vote. Thank you. All right, moving to item six, correspondence. Anyone from the council like to start correspondence?
Yeah, I got the call from a constituent.
Can you speak to that?
I got a call from a constituent about a problem that has developed down at the alleyway from Lake Street, West Lake Street, going back to the new dance studio, that there's a lot of congestion there and pedestrian traffic. And I went down and took a look at it and there certainly is a lot of congestion. Changed situation.
I believe that gentleman is here tonight to speak in public comment?
Yeah, yes.
So we'll, we'll pick that up in public comment if that's okay with you. Okay. Anybody else want to comment on correspondence?
I had similar correspondence with the same individual.
Yeah, I did also and also received a couple comments about the mill pond, about the desire to have it dredged or fixed, so.
And also I received, and I think all of us did, an email from a constituent hoping that we don't forget about the children's library and that we keep that in mind when we're doing our goals planning. So, and I think we maybe didn't put that on the list. So I think it's timely that that person brought that up because there is a plan from the library for that, so we probably should get it on the list somewhere. So we'll take care of that at our second meeting tonight. So, we do have a work session after this meeting for goals. Any other correspondence that anybody had? Okay, seeing none, oh, yeah, we'll move on to questions and public comment. Let me get my little thing here. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided at the podium. And like to invite our gentleman with some input.
Yeah, my name is Bob Grigus and my wife's name is Debbie Grigus. She operates and owns the dance studio that we were, that I had called all the council members about. And I didn't register with the.
No, you don't have to because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, no.
You need to sign in and leave your address.
Yeah, on the sheet.
I'll do that.
Because we need to be able to find you.
Yeah, I know, I live right on the mill pond, as a matter of fact. So I gave everybody the survey of the building and where the alleyway is and what we're trying to do is open this up to discussion so we can get the best idea on what to do with this My wife and I have been talking a lot about it and actually Bruce Johnson witnessed last week a little girl running out and almost getting hit by a car and that's when it just kind of, you know, hit us that we need to, we need to do something before something happens. One, a couple options and I think Steve would probably have engineers look at it as well because I'm not a city engineer and I don't, you know, I don't know how to do that, but we were talking about maybe doing a one-way going from south to north, in other words, from West Lake Street to campus, and then lowering the speed limit to five miles an hour instead of 15 miles an hour. That's insane, 15 in that little, little alleyway. As you can see, I wrote down that the alley is about 23 feet wide between buildings, from building to building, not, not curb to curb, but actually building to building. And then as an example, I used Church Street. Church Street has parking on one side and that's some 32 feet and that's from gutter to gutter or curb to curb. And so we would like to have the council and the city look at this and see if they have any suggestions as to what a good solution is rather than tell the city what we think. We'd rather everybody have some input on it and see what we can do. And I did, I did mention to most of the council members about the pond. I've lived on the mill pond for about five years now and if we don't do anything to that mill pond, I was here during the listening session, so I didn't speak during that, but if we don't do anything, we're just going to have a channel and it's just going to be mud all the way out to the channel because every year it fills in more and I don't really believe it's from the runoff from the street. It's, it's like an alluvial fan coming off the lake. It's all the sediment that comes off the lake and it settles to either side, so. And it's very difficult to get out to the, to the lake when, when the lily pads are in full bloom and so that's my input and I think there are a number of people that live on the mill pond that would like to see it dredged, but, you know, I can't speak for anyone but myself as far as that goes. And so that's all I have to say about that. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. When I was down there and we were there while you were conducting business, do people park along in the alleyway itself a lot?
They do, they park on one side of it and, and if you, you know, if you take up, a normal parking space is about eight and a half feet wide, so if they parked on, like next to the, our building, then whatever the math is, you know, they would, they would have ample amount of room to get by on the left side if it was one-way, but not, if you parked on both sides. And we would, if, if that was the solution, then we would put parking lines in so they know where to park.
Does the parking lot get filled up a lot?
Yeah, like, what night did you go over? Do you remember?
Last night.
Like Monday nights are really busy.
Yeah, it must have been Tuesday night.
She's got over, she's got over 300, 300 students, so, you know, and they all had different nights and come and go, so.
It's mostly at night?
Yeah, it's from 3:30 at night till around nine, nine at night, so. And that's Monday, Monday through Thursday and then on Fridays, she's open till like 7:30, so.
Let me ask Steve, P, a question here. What would be the normal way to proceed on an item like this?
Well, if you want to analyze it, you're going to send it to your traffic engineers and let them look at it.
Does that involve money?
Yeah, it involves money. Anytime you include an engineer, it involves some money.
Is it something that we could do without going outside? I mean, it's between the police chief and yourself and the other powers that be. Is this something that we need to get an outside opinion on? Or do you think you already know what the solution should be and why are we wasting this money?
Well, there's more people that require access to that alley than Bob. And if you know the length, if you close this alley off, you're going to have problems with things like cars and coffee and those types of things.
We're not looking at closing it, we're, he was talking about making it one-way.
Yeah, that's, that's almost virtually like closing it off, depending on how you're approaching the prospect, so, you know, five, a five mile an hour speed limit, better marking on parking, stop signs, particularly at the halfway point there by the, by the edge of his building so that people aren't racing past that blind corner there. There are a lot of options and they can weigh them and consider them. I mean, I have a pretty good idea what they're going to come up with, but they, they have liability insurance to cover that I don't.
Who is, who has liability?
The.
The engineers?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, I guess my feeling from seeing the situation that if we want to have parking along the side of the building, then it can't be two-way traffic because there just isn't enough room to get through, you know, if everybody would park along the side. So I would say there would have to be no parking there if we kept it two ways. Would you think that probably two ways is what people would want and then just no parking on the building side? Or am I putting you on the spot? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
I don't think there's any other street in the city that's that narrow that's two ways.
Oh, yeah, there are.
Are there?
Oh, yeah.
20, 20.
Aaronside, there are a couple.
Yeah.
So I'm, it's not the norm to have.
But there's really, there's only one, one person other than us that needs access to that and that's.
Two.
Well, Bruce Johnson is fine with it.
Yeah, but the municipal building, the old municipal building access, also, they have access to that.
Yeah.
So it's you, the old municipal building and, and the property to the west, he's got a, a storage shed there and, and he parks a lot of vehicles back in there, so. I guess from my standpoint, I, I would prefer not to make any recommendations tonight. I, I'd like to go back and look because we have a lot of alleys that are very similar to this. In fact, the alley that runs behind the Opera House has a very similar problem. And we've talked about it, we've talked about it for 20 years as far as I know.
Yeah.
So these are, I mean, it's not an unusual situation.
It's called an old city with small alleys.
Yeah, the only unusual part is that there's 300 kids. It's like being right out of school with it, that narrow bit.
Well, can we, this has been brought to our attention and we ask you to bring it back to us in some shape and form, memo or something like that?
Yep.
Okay, we'll, we will, you'll be seeing more from the council on this item.
Well, thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Well, thank you for your time in writing and also in coming.
You're welcome.
We're in public comment right now. I know some people came in while we were in it. Is there anyone that just came in that wants to speak during public comment? Now would be the time. Otherwise, if you have an item on the agenda, we can, will probably be willing to suspend the rules so you can speak during your item, so, whichever you would like. Okay, well, seeing no one racing up to the podium, I'll move out of public comment and go to number eight, city manager's report.
The items that I have attached to the agenda are the monthly police department reports, the Arbor Daily Foundation Letter for Tree City, which we, again, all five fully. The Jefferson County Economic Development and Thrive, I put those together, all the information related to that. There's a report in there about building permits countywide. That was kind of interesting. And then the Rock River Coalition Thank You Letter, so we had those. I have received a proposal from Strand on the testing of the mill pond that we had talked about. We'll probably have that available at one of the study sessions coming up.
Okay.
I want to meet with Sue Graham and Patricia Cicero and go over that and see how we can chop that up and then come in with a proposal. The next planning commission meeting has a bunch of future land use changes coming through and some of them are in relationship to some of the work we've already done, like the CSM and the change in the public institution overlay at Lakeside, the Elm Street Commercial Building, the proposal for the 17 acres across from Tiger and Park. So those will all be coming forward as land use changes at the planning commission, so I may want to pay a little attention to that. That's, that'll be some information, that'll be interesting. Mulberry Street, the public information meeting is Thursday night.
What time?
The PIM is actually at 6 o'clock, but they will have people there earlier and later to answer questions, particularly the real estate people. I think they've started scheduling already like 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Would you, would you advise for the property owners to schedule a reservation?
I would absolutely advise them to schedule a meeting with them. You get a lot more information and you have an engineer there who can discuss the issues. That's not always the case when you're just meeting with the real estate people, but you'll have the design engineers there and you'll have the real estate people there and you'll have some city staff there, so, yeah.
What time do the real estate people come? Five?
No, the real estate people will probably be there about 3 o'clock.
Oh.
Depending on who schedules when.
And who's coming at five?
The engineers.
Oh, the engineers.
Because the public information meeting at 6 is actually a presentation by the engineers about the construction project.
Okay.
It's not really anything that has to do with the real estate acquisition project. It's just that they come together so that you have the opportunity to handle both at the same time. The, and the real estate acquisition people are there earlier and stay later because they meet with everybody individually. The engineer just usually does a public information meeting and then he will be there available for people to talk to for, you know, a little while if they have any specific engineering related questions. But most people are real estate related, so they, they go with the real estate people.
Now, will there be a notary public here during that time because so letters and the things we got need to be notarized?
Can you say that again?
The packet, since we live on Mulberry, that we got has an item in it that needs to be taken to a notary public when we sign it. So will we have staff from the city available to sign it?
Generally, they have a notary, notary available at those meetings.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise people would be really inconvenienced, so.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think. We did it all on South Main Street. We didn't, we never had a notary there and they got all of them notarized, so.
Okay.
I don't know if they notarize them right there on the spot or if the notary signature is really for them and not for you.
I don't know either, but it's on there that it has to be notarized, so I didn't know if we needed to go to City Hall before they came here to have notary, but there'll be somebody here.
Yeah.
Good question. Maybe we should check into that to make sure what, what their expectation is, so.
The bike trail on the south side is substantially complete. We're trying to finalize the easement.
I couldn't hear you, what?
The bike trail on the south side is substantially complete.
And that's open to the public, right?
Yes.
It's not just for certain people?
No, no, it's a state, city.
And it comes off, where do you pick that up? Right at the bend where the.
Other spur goes north, same spot.
Right there, okay.
The main and development agreement is signed, sealed and delivered.
Did that generally follow the standard developer's agreement?
Very substantially followed the standard developer's agreement. The only place that it deviated slightly was in the agreements that we had that ran through the city council and the public works board.
Okay.
We received the uranium consent order. We're reviewing that, that'll probably be on the next agenda. We also had to deal with the cross connections, which is an ordinance we passed last time, so we, I don't know if you've gotten any comments on that, a lot of letters went out. We're in the process of getting a corrosion study task order put together. And what that does is that analyzes how much orthophosphate we put in and what kind of blend of orthophosphate we put in so that it reduces the amount of lead that's actually dissolving in the water. But we have to balance that with the wastewater treatment plant and how much phosphorus we send to the wastewater treatment plant, so this is a tedious balancing act because we don't have a lot of leeway in our permit because we release into a small warm water stream rather than a large river. The water rate went to the Public Service Commission, so you'll probably see it in
There appears to be quite a bit of work on lead pipes going to homes. Now, a lot of that work is being done by outside staff, not city staff, public, private people, or is most of it being done by city staff?
Everything that goes on the private property is done by a plumber, private plumber.
Okay.
And they have to be approved, so there are only two of them, I think. There's SNS Plumbing and Pertzborn. The city portion, which is from the shut-off out to the water main, is contracted too, but we contract with Forest to do that for us.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're, they'll be getting into a lot of streets.
Some of it's some pretty big digging. I don't know, does that mean they're low, down low, when you see big, huge mounds of ground?
Potentially, or it took them a while to find it. Wasn't exactly where they thought it was or ran, so they have to, they have to search more.
Okay.
On Mulberry Street, we may be missing a resolution. Well, I know we're missing a resolution. We've had, I've had it on my desk for over a month, but there was no direction that I needed to have it passed yet. Well, today I got a notice and an email that said I had to have it by Friday.
So no way.
So we may have to put together a special meeting to get that resolution passed sometime this week for a couple minutes, see if we can get enough people together to do that. My last one is that staff all have the 2019 budget from my initial preparation and they have their opportunity to work on it now, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Is that something we'll have to put on at the bottom of the agenda, getting a time for another meeting this week?
Yes.
Okay, so don't let me forget that, everybody.
It has to be.
Okay, moving on to item, does anybody? Okay, moving on to item number, does anybody else have anything for Steve before I move on? Okay. Acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board of March 13th, 2018, has been received and will be put on file. Item 10, Council Business Miscellaneous Licenses. Ms. Key, would you read those licenses, please, those people?
We have two tavern operators licenses, Thomas Orville and Tiffany Metham.
Do I have a motion to approve the two licenses in front of us?
I'll make the motion to approve the tavern operator licenses for Thomas Orville and Tiffany, yeah, Metham.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
That moves us on to item B, Discussion Decision on Sandbar Lease Agreement. And would you read that for us, please, Ms. Key?
The title for-
Yeah.
That item is City Council Motion 18-4-2-1, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Lease Agreement Between the City of Lake Mills and Herring Enterprises LLC.
Okay, so, everyone has seen this in their packets. Does anyone wish to make a motion so we can discuss it?
I'll move.
Motion 18-4-2-1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded for discussion purposes, and that means we are in discussion. Has anybody liked, Steve, do you want to kind of, kind of do a short synopsis for the council? Or not?
No, I can. Well, Dan, you want to, over Dan, you have a memo? There's a memo that's attached in the packet.
Yes, we have the lease agreement.
Yep.
Which is pretty long, I think. Is it very different from, if you compare the current one to this, do we make a lot of changes?
From the last iteration, not substantially. There were a couple of amendments that were put into place last time specifically regarding parking, and there was clarification provided regarding the gas pump that they also operate. That iteration is largely the same as this. I dealt with two attorneys on the development of this lease, so there were some changes with regard to the actual verbiage of the agreement, but it's largely consistent with previous leases to Mr. Herring and his LLC.
Okay, comments from the council?
I can tell you that the Sandbar has been run by Herring's now for at least 20 years. This lease extends it for at least two more years. Does give three, but the third year is an option. We can, we were kind of trying to be careful there because not knowing how the construction was going to phase out at the beach, we wanted to be a little bit careful, but we thought two years, we were in pretty good shape. So, from that standpoint, that's probably the most substantial change in the lease from the previous time. I think the last time we made it five years.
Right, which is obviously not good at this point because of the things we're looking at, but we don't know what we're doing yet.
Well, actually, last time it was only one year because we were dealing with the code requirements, you know, bringing it up to code, and we thought we were going to tear it down.
Yep, that's right. The time before that, it was five years.
Will we have any problems with, do you think we will? I know you, looking at your magic, your crystal ball, whether there'll be, are we going to be able to get through the lease without major updates to codes?
Well, the building inspector did another inspection this year and felt confident that we could get another five years out of it, so.
I did note that in the lease language that the provisions that deal with bringing it up to code compliance are still there. And I thought that's a good thing because there might be something that comes up during the next two years and how we're going to handle it. So, I'm glad you left that in.
They didn't have to take it out. That's an aging building. I mean, it seems appropriate, just like your train of thought.
Okay, no other questions or comments? Call the roll on that.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, takes us to item C, Resolution 18-10, Public Depositors. You want to read the title for that?
Resolution 18-10, Designating Official Public Depositors.
Okay, I need a motion to approve. This is housekeeping. We do this every year. We haven't changed any places, so-
No, we haven't.
Everything is still the same, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 18-10.
I need a second. Second, Vicky. Any discussion on it before we vote? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, taking us to item D, Resolution 18-11, the official newspaper. Please read that title.
Resolution 18-11, Designating Official Newspaper.
Same procedure, no change here, and we need a motion.
I move we adopt Resolution 18-11, Official Newspaper.
I'll second it.
Oh, goodness, I'll get this one to Doug. Okay, it's kind of a tie. Any discussion? Seeing we have one newspaper, this is a great big decision. Okay, let's call roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, item 11, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Now, we need to figure out what we want to do about this meeting we have to have before the end of the week?
Yeah.
So, anybody have, I think, what's available for your work schedule? When are you in town before?
Anything is available for me except 6:00 to 6:30 tomorrow. Other than that, I usually get back in town around 5:30-ish.
Do you have anything?
About five minutes it'll take?
Yeah, yeah, about five minutes.
So, if we work around his schedule and not do 6:00 to 6:30 tomorrow, we- Steve, what is your schedule? Are you available?
I'm going to be here Thursday night.
You'll be here Thursday night?
Yeah.
Oh, for the thing?
We'll be here Thursday night, too.
Okay, should we do something connected with Thursday then? Since he's got to be here anyway? We have to be, well, we don't have to be here.
Thursday's fine.
Thursday, okay. We could just go to a separate room, right?
They're downstairs, so we-
Well, they're downstairs, so we can meet up here. Do we need some, or can you just take minutes? Or how do we-
Do we need to notice that?
Notice-
Oh, we have to notice those.
Yeah, we have to go through the whole thing.
We should be able to get that notice, though, if you-
Yes, that's why we, Thursday's a good day. Thursday's better than- Gives us the adequate requirement for notice.
Around 5:30 or so?
Yeah, that would work. And then I prefer the clerk to be there because she's the official representative.
Can you do that, Ms.?
We got a resolution that we have-
I think so.
I have to sign and send in the doc.
Is 5:30 a good time because you're until 5, right? So, 5:30 on Thursday for a brief council meeting to do the housekeeping on the, what was it called? Mulberry Street, something?
Yeah, it's a Mulberry Street Grant Resolution.
Okay. So, we'll ask Ms. Key and-
I would swear we did something with that.
I don't know.
Does anybody else have a significant memory of it?
Did you check this?
No, okay.
I think we talked about it.
I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, but I don't think we put it on an agenda, so sorry we didn't do that, so.
Well, we can plan for Thursday at 5:30 and, Steve, we can take a closer look tomorrow and if we find that we don't need to, we just, we'll let you guys know and then we just won't notice it as an item.
We just have to leave Steve, no. Because he's not here.
Oh. That's why. We did a motion.
We need a motion.
No, we did a motion.
Instead of a resolution?
Yes.
Oh, we did a motion, but we didn't do a resolution.
Yep, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute documents pertaining to the Mulberry Street construction project.
Oh, good for you.
Well, if we did a motion that authorizes you to do those things-
But the only thing, I'm with you, the only thing I'm thinking is if the resolution is necessary for them, if they actually need a city action resolution. You're saying that you think that we could, he could execute the resolution with the motion in place?
Probably not.
Yeah, I don't sign resolutions.
Council president signs them.
So, you'll bring a resolution with you to that meeting for us to approve? Okay, so we have a special meeting, a short one. It'll be in here on Thursday night at 5:30.
All right, and I'll, we'll call and just confirm everything as well to make sure. And then because of the short timing, we'll probably just email you the documents or just have you look ahead of time. I'm not going to be able to get it in the mail or anything to you, so.
I don't think-
But we can just, we'll call and confirm everything up and talk to Steve as well.
Yeah, just make sure Steve finds out. Okay, any other future agenda items that we need to put on the next meeting? Oh, would you please put appointment of, okay, committees?
Yeah, board and committee and commission appointments.
Appointments on that one?
And I'll have my appointments on there. The recognition and appreciation of service for Steve Velo, who retired.
Okay.
Ordinances for that were coming through the Plan Commission, so we'll have the future land use ordinances, first readings. We'll have the ordinance zoning amendment request for Real Hope Community Church, which is tied to that new subdivision, Crestview Meadows. And then the preliminary platform, Crestview Meadows. Those, I guarantee will be on there.
Now, I have a question. We have two gentlemen that came in. Do you all know where they?
They're in the study session.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I didn't know and I didn't want to close the meeting and say, you didn't let us talk.
All three of them are.
Okay, all right.
The only one that isn't is Chris.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. Item 12, Convenient to Close Session Pursuant to 1985-1E, Deliberating or Negotiating the Purchase of Public Properties, the Investing of Public Funds, or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Require a Closed Session. And 1985-1G, Conferring with Legal Counsel Who is Rendering Oral or Written Advice Concerning Strategy to be Adopted by the Body With Respect to Litigation in Which It Is or Is Likely to Be Involved. Need a motion to move into closed session.
So, move.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay, thank you.
We should have that pursuant to State Statute, Section 1985. It's technicality, but we're supposed to have that in there.
Pursuant to State-
Oh, yeah, it should say with stats in front of that. That's the designation.
Okay, we need to vote on the amendment? Okay, we have-
Well, could that just be editorial change?
Yeah, it's Scrivener's error.
Okay.
Yes, we'll add it. It's a mere Scrivener's error, yes. That should be there. The designation does suffice, but it's informal.
Is that what that little S thing, that-
Absolutely.
State statutes.
Well, that's a section.
It's section number, right, but it refers to a specific statute.
Okay, so do we or do we not need an amendment?
I don't think that you do. We can add with stats into it. That's the problem.
He's going to add it, so it'll be fine.
Add it with that, with state stats. So, I have a motion and a second. Yeah, forgot who this, you were the second, yeah. Okay, any discussion on going into closed session? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Now, we will be moving into the side room for the closed session. We will reconvene and adjourn this body at that time and then come back in here for the closed session about the items that are posted.